Welcome to Groton Matters, where we examine important issues in depth in a fair and balanced manner, all the interests of informed decisions. Today, we're going to look at the 2022 town elections. Our government's only as good as the people who run it, and the only way good people get chosen is through informed votes. We're here to provide the public with an understanding of the key aspects of candidates, their positions, and an understanding of their decision-making. We're doing this show in two parts. Part one of the 2022 town elections is on the select board. Please be sure to watch part two, which is on the school committee. For the select board this year, there are four candidates for two positions. Two of the candidates are incumbents, Josh Deegan and John Riley. The two additional candidates are Guy Alberdini and Matt Pisani. Neither have held office before. We've included questions from viewers, and we identified them when they've asked to be identified. We tried to get a sense of how the candidates would make their decisions. For incumbents, we asked them about their records, and the candidates all got an outline of the topics that we'd be covering, but they did not get the specific questions. We didn't want to spring anything on them, at the same time, we wanted their candid responses. I'd like to thank the Groton Channel for all of their help. Noah has just been amazing, and much of what we're able to do here is thanks to him. Here's a brief index of the topics that we've covered and the timestamps associated with them, in case you're interested in skipping back and forth. And I'd like to welcome Guy Alberdini to Groton Matters. Guy, welcome.
Thank you very much. Great to be here.
Thanks for coming, and I appreciate your being a candidate. It takes something to put yourself out there, and without it, we wouldn't have good government. So I appreciate your willingness to do that, Guy. Why don't we just start with a little background about you? What's your professional background, and how does that professional background prepare you for this role?
Well, my professional background is electronics. So I guess working with many different types, many different people in different roles, I guess, would help me towards this position. But over at least the past 10 years, probably closer to 15, I've been very involved, you know, government, getting in touch with the reps and senators, staying with the federal level, and down into staying in the town level, to get them to co-sponsor different bills. I even had, in the state level, had drafted up a proposal and had become Bill H. 4141.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to ask you about that. Yeah, so why don't we go right to that? Why don't you describe that bill and what it would do?
Basically, it's a election reform bill. The very first, there's like 18 different sections, so I'm not going to cover them.
Sure, yeah.
And too much here, but the first one is more transparency in Beacon Hill. Okay, and then another big one is, like right now, in the state, you could, someone could go to a polling station, give the address, and then as a clerk goes down, the she, the guy, the person could say, "That's me", and then they give them the ballot to vote.
Okay.
So so looking to have, you know, a system in place that shows you're the person going in to vote, and you actually live at that address.
Okay.
I personally know at least four people in the state where they went to vote, and they were told that they already voted.
I see. Yeah, I think, so I recall, maybe this sort of reasonably sums it up. It deals with absentee ballot restrictions and assigning barcodes to ballots so that you can associate a ballot with a person, government requirement for a government mission ID of some kind. And actually, I saw that it reduces or would eliminate contributions to political campaigns from outside of the state, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And there was a unique barcode on each ballot to prevent duplication.
Got it, got it. So I will guarantee you that you're the only candidate who has co-sponsored a bill in the House, so hats off to you. But I have been asking each candidate, how would you describe your political affiliation? And is there any role for politics, for political affiliation, within the select board?
I pretty much don't have one.
Okay.
No, I'm registered, unenrolled. When they vote, it's on the person, not on the party, and same. And if I like a bill or if I don't like a bill, it's what's in the bill.
Okay.
You know, not, no, some bills have fancy great sounding titles, but when you look into the bill, it's like, no, I don't think so.
Great. Do you, I've also asked, how do you feel about the recent elections? Do you think that we've had free and fair elections on the federal, state, and local level? And do you expect the local elections to be free and fair?
Well, let's say, some states definitely had their problems, in particular, some of the swing states. I'm sure that I could go into that for like at least an hour and a half.
Yeah, we're tight on time.
Yes, so a couple of ways to think of free elections. No, one way of looking is, free elections, everyone in the world can vote, in the country and in the state. I don't think that should be happening, everyone in the world, so. No.
Well, I guess I'm just asking if you believe that our elections have been held freely and fairly?
I'd say for the most part.
Good.
You know, I know a few problems in this state, but, no, hopefully it'll be ironed out.
Okay. In fact, to more of a general background, and then we'll wrap up on your background. Can you give me an example of a couple of accomplishments and maybe a mistake that you've incurred over the last years in your profession that have been valuable as lessons to you?
Okay, trying to think, oh. Sometimes you don't quite understand what the engineer's trying to get at. So that would, you know, could possibly hold up production a bit. No, but accomplishments being in production, pretty much make sure everything's working properly to get out the door in time.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to economic development. Do you, do you think we can reduce the burden to taxpayers through economic development here in town?
I think we can.
Describe how you think that could work.
Well, have to figure out, okay, what, how much taxes are the businesses actually paying? Like, I know there's a couple huge entities in Groton that have many buildings, good amount of income, and I believe they don't pay any tax.
You're talking about the nonprofits?
I'm talking about the public, the private schools.
Yep, okay.
So for mine, they give some of a donation, but compared to the taxes they probably should be paying, I'm sure it's very minimal.
Okay, those are, so I'm talking more about economic development, where we go and spur new development in town. That's a separate issue, which is the one of the issue of nonprofits who by law don't have to pay taxes. If you have a plan for how to have the nonprofits pay more, I'm sure voters would be interested in hearing it. It's been a tough nut to crack.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, so no, bring more businesses in, but, okay, where exactly do we put them?
Right.
If if the property at the old conductor lab is fairly clean, maybe a business or two could go in there. I'm not sure it's clean the ground as here from many years ago.
But you know, so business income to the town is only 5% of the income for the town, and the conductor lab itself is just a couple of acres compared to dozens and dozens of acres of business income or of business property. So even if we fully populated the conductor lab, we wouldn't have much of an additional contribution.
Yeah, then years ago was Deluxe. I mean, years ago was Nebbs, I think it's Deluxe now, just beyond the railroad bridge.
Yep.
Maybe one or two more businesses could go in there, because that seems to be a huge property in there.
Yeah. Okay, and we're talking about hiring an economic development professional. Do you have a sense for the economics behind hiring an economic development professional? Meaning, would it be a good investment to spend $100,000 a year to hire an economics, an economic development professional and to support the costs required associated with that?
Well, I think the board should figure out, first, where potential businesses go before we look into spending 100 grand a year. No, if it makes sense to bring more businesses in, like maybe where Deluxe is, then we could hire someone for like a better overview.
What would that look like, hiring someone, in terms of dollars in return?
Yeah, for 100,000 dollars a year would I think the town should be looking at least 150, maybe 200,000 in income.
Yeah.
Right, to cover their expense.
Right, you have to, in order to justify the expense, yeah.
If you're hiring this guy for 100 grand a year, and your return is only 50 grand a year, that doesn't make much sense.
Okay, I'm sure there's quite an analysis required to do that, but you've sort of given folks an idea that you're quite conscious of the requirement for a return. So unless you had something else to add to that, we can certainly, we can move on to the next thing.
Okay, next thing.
Sure, okay. Let's, let's move on to the budget. So the average tax bill in town is going to rise by, just under $420 next year. And that's a 4.5% rise. The revenues in the town are only rising by 3.25%. What do, what do those figures mean to you? What does, what does it mean when our tax bills rise faster than our revenues? And what does that tell you? And as a select board member, what would that inspire?
Well, too much money's going out someplace. And say, it's like no, what's the tax increase, what is it trying to cover? And why is that expense there?
Have you taken a look at any of the expenses? And do you have any sense for what expenses might be unnecessary or larger than necessary?
I started to look at, but quite through, quite a bit to go through, I'm still trying to plow through it.
Yeah.
It's amazing of how much is happening in the town, expense-wise.
There, yeah, it's 16, 19 million dollars a year. That's, you know, that's a lot of expense, and so there's a lot of detail behind that. And I don't blame you for finding it hard to instantly find the opportunity in all those numbers. It's hard.
Right.
So a lot of our recent growth in expenses has been in public safety, and we continue to consider additional public safety expenses. How would you go about deciding if a public safety expense is worth making? You know, I'll give you two examples. Adding a dispatcher for 911 calls and adding additional firefighters. How would, what would go, what process would you use to figure out whether that's worth doing?
Okay, there's probably some form, like so many firefighters per thousand people or something. Same with the equipment.
So you'd use comparative metrics. The average town of our size spends $100 per capita on firefighters, something like that, is that right? That's just an example.
So many firefighters, no, could safely cover so much Jacobage or residential properties.
Okay. We got a bunch of questions from viewers. I've gone through some that wanted to be anonymous, but Al Neff was interested in knowing, what will you do to limit the growth of his taxes?
Well, there will be a proposal coming up shortly to limit taxes for long-term residents. And myself and a friend of mine would be, and it was actually this idea, so it's just at the drawing board right now. So I don't know per se what the suggested cap is going to be, but this long-term residence that are being basically forced out because he can't afford the taxes anymore.
Do you have any familiarity with the efforts that are already going on with regard to avoiding or offering tax benefits to people, well, seniors, basically, but the, and the legal limitations, the legal limitations on doing that? Do you have any understanding of that?
I heard of one where they work so many hours for the town or something, and then $1,000 or something is cut off the tax bill?
Yep, there are, currently there are initiatives that would help people to lower their taxes. There are a lot of limitations on what can be done just by law, but people certainly have thought about the things that you're talking about. Um, yeah. Do you, do you have, so employee benefits are an enormous part of our budget, over 30% of our $16 million budget. And they're growing it over, just under 11% a year, 10.74% a year. What does that, what does that say to you with regard to sustainability? And have you, have you paid attention to this at all? Any thoughts on, on the impact of employee benefits on our budgets?
Yeah, well, it's not just town budgets, but it's also every corporation goes through the same thing.
Yep.
No, it's mostly has to do with healthcare, and no, healthcare providers raising their costs. So you have to choose either higher deductible for your employees or some lower level of healthcare service to, you know, keep that bill down.
Yep. Is it also possible that we simply have to accept the cost and pass the cost on to taxpayers?
I guess, at some point, yes, but no, try and minimize as much as possible.
Moving on to sort of some, well, we were going to do this at town meeting, now we're doing it at the town election, the town seal. What are your thoughts on the initiative to change the town seal?
I thought the town seal should stay just the way it is.
Okay.
No, there was no problem for, since I was a kid, you know, with the town seal.
So. Okay, this one comes from one of our viewers. They're concerned about traffic calming in town, and they live right on 119, and they'd like to know what, if anything, you, what you, how you feel about the traffic through town, and what you might be able to do about making it easier to be a resident along 119.
I am a resident along 119. I'm right by the flagpole by Philo's. So if, no, leaving at the wrong time in the morning, it's, no, a lot of traffic coming all the way from Ashby to get to 495.
Yeah.
You know, so the suggestion that was put to me was maybe a traffic light, you know, somewhere around Route 40, and then have to think of like the implications on how that's going to affect the rest of 119 and people coming on 225 and Hall Street. No, it'd be just, you know, completely bald-necked, and nobody can move because the light's red. After Route 40, it seemed to pretty much clear up.
But other than just observation, do you have any thoughts, do you have any thoughts on what we would do or what could be done?
Yeah, the possible traffic light around Route 40 is one idea. Another idea is somehow in the morning, you have all the buses going, so they're picking up the kids east to west. So traffic's not, you know, seeing behind the bus every other house or something.
I see. Okay.
Then thinking, okay, bus going, we have to swing around to 119 somehow, but.
Okay.
And then a little bit further.
Okay, thank you. And here's the last one, and that is, well, two actually. The Prescott Community Center has done a lot of work to try to stay alive. What are your thoughts about supporting the continuation of the use of Prescott Building as a community center?
I think it's a good idea, you know, it's quite a few businesses in there, and yeah, took classes, and they're not too long ago, maybe like a month ago.
And lastly, the community, the CPA, the Community Preservation Act, it's been suggested that we, the town, reduce its contribution as a way of reducing taxes. What are your thoughts about continuing our current support of the, or participation in the Community Preservation Act?
Yeah, when you say they, I'm thinking like the historical districts, which I'm living and gives the town a certain, I guess, essence?
I'm sorry, say it again, please, I didn't understand.
When you say that, thinking of like the historical districts, 119 and Hall Street, and gives the town like a certain atmosphere.
Yeah.
At the end of someone wants to.
Yeah, I'm actually talking about the, oh, sorry, I'm talking more about a participation in a, in an act called the Community Preservation Act of the CPA, which is fairly complicated, and if you're not familiar with that, it's easy to understand, but, because it's not all that common or understood. I just wondered whether or not you had feel, particular feelings about that particular act and our.
I guess I just know very little of that act.
Okay, great. Well, so I've hit the end of all the things that I've been asked to ask you or thought myself, but is there anything that you wanted to be asked about that I didn't touch on here? Or anything you'd like to close with?
Yeah, basically, the elections, so I touched on, you know, how people could just go to the election table and give an address and say, "That's me." We need a system that shows who you are and that you actually live at the address. And also, what was the other one here? Oh, basically, we need a link to determine which ballots were from registered voters, if there was more ballots, for some reason, more ballots in there are actual registered voters.
Okay, so you're, you've been pretty clear about your concern about elections and making sure they're well-run. Got it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Guy, thank you very much for taking the time to do this. I hope that you feel like you've gotten, given voters a sense of what you have to offer. I think you have, and I want to thank you for your participation, and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much, I think I have.
Good.
Thank you for this opportunity.
You're welcome, Guy. Take care. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
So, welcome, Josh Deegan.
Thanks for having me on today, Jack.
You're more than welcome, and thanks for signing up to be a candidate for select board and re-upping after quite a number of, quite a number of terms. Why don't you give us a little bit of a background, your professional background? You know, your select board background is well-known, but just your professional background and how that prepares you for this role?
Well, 40 years ago, I opened a hardscape, landscape construction company in Boston, and when my wife and my children moved to Groton in 1991, I expanded and had a location in both Groton and Boston, ultimately deciding to close the Boston location and keeping it focused to working within the Groton vicinity. Recently, I have entered into another business venture, which is a food truck serving gourmet deli-type sandwiches along with a partner. And in addition to that, I am the chair of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation that restores cemeteries in Poland, and not Poland, Maine, Poland, the country of Poland. So that's my business background, and I've had success at Earthscape for 40 years, and that's my livelihood. So that's my background, and it kind of has segued into the select board in so much as the background that I have in business, I feel lends itself quite well, because the town should be run as a business. It provides services to constituents, and those constituents are very similar to customers. But we have to balance the budget every year in order to make sure that the town isn't losing money on the services it offers while providing its employees the needs that they have to have to sustain themselves. So it's a fine balancing act from the wants to the haves to the needs, and all of those sometimes coalesce, and at other times, we have to make the hard decisions as to what's in the best interest of the town.
Okay. How would you describe your political affiliation? And what role should political affiliation play on the select board?
Well, let's take your second question first. Political affiliation should have no role on the select board. It should be the best person that's most qualified to do the job, to run the town in the best interest of the constituents, regardless of their party affiliation. I believe myself to be a party of none. I'm unenrolled, and when I vote at the polls, I believe in voting for the best qualified candidate that can fill that role, whether the Republican, Democrat, or Green Party candidate, even a Libertarian. So who can do the job that's up for election, and who has the best qualifications to fill that role?
You may feel like you've mentioned this, but do you think there's any, any place for political affiliation in the role itself?
Not when you're sitting at the table as an elected official or represent everyone. It's fine to have your own political viewpoints relative to candidates on a state or national stage, and that your First Amendment rights give you those rights to express your feelings towards those candidates.
Good.
Or those holding those offices.
Do you have faith that recent federal, state, local elections have been and will be free and fair?
I believe they're free and fair. I mean, there are others out there that say that the elections are rigged, but, you know, having watched our local elections, I certainly know that they're fair. And on the national level, there has never been any widespread fraud proven, even though there's been multiple cases, recounts, court challenges, you name it, that it shows that our elections in the United States are free and fair, and I believe it.
So more on your background, how about letting us, giving us a couple of accomplishments of yours and one mistake. And feel free, if you like, it's even more salient, if you can talk about accomplishments and mistakes in your role as select board. And what did you learn from, what did you learn from those things? What were your takeaways?
From business or from select board, Jack?
Select board would be most relevant, but feel free to give viewers anything you think is that they will find useful in determining your candidacy.
Well, an overall high-level view is that when you make a mistake, if you don't learn from it, shame on you. That mistakes are made through everyone's steps in lives, but what you need to do is you need to learn from those mistakes and make sure you don't do them again. But what you need to do is you need to learn from those mistakes and make sure you don't do them again. And that if there's a better way of doing things, do those. From the sort of business perspective, I certainly had my share of mistakes when I first started out. And when a mistake occurs now, we always try and make it right, although it doesn't occur very often. It does happen. You translate that over to the select board and what's in the best interest of the town needs to be taken first. Certainly, some of the achievements that we've had was the hiring of a town manager back in 2010. So the town would be run professionally. Some mistakes that we had granting a blanket building permit with a one size fits all with one fee associated to it rather than that permit being assessed on gross square footage. Boynton Meadows was another mistake. You know, putting town tax dollars in place for an investment that didn't come to fruition was a bad move.
Got it. Do you, do you feel, there was a kind of kerfuffle around a Facebook post of yours. Do you feel that was a mistake?
No, I don't. I feel that again, as I expressed earlier, my First Amendment rights will not be usurped by my role as a elected official. And that from a personal perspective, I have no issue posting my beliefs. I think that the post that I made drew genitalia around the sitting president of the United States of America. And when you act like one of those, you deserve to be called for it. And this man created divisiveness across this nation that still exists in this nation to this day. And that I feel that while there are individuals out there that are very qualified to do jobs that he was undignified and I had no problem with the post that I made. And if those found it offensive, don't like it, then they don't need to vote for me and my candidacy for reelection. And of those who did like it, well, great, good for them. But that's how I see it and I will always call it like I see it. I won't mince my words. And that's me. It's Josh being Josh, as Jack has always liked to say.
Okay. So let's move on to economic development. Do you think we can reduce the burden on taxpayers through economic development here in Groton? Does Groton have or can Groton have what it takes to to have enough economic development to lower our tax burdens?
No. I don't think that will ever be achieved. I think that the rural character of Groton has become more commercialized as of late, but commercial development only represents approximately 5% of our town's tax base. And that where commercial development pays the same rate that the average homeowner pays, it's going to be very difficult to see any additional commercial development offset that until a community gets so large that they can have a split tax rate. What I mean by that is larger communities that have upwards of 20% commercial development have two tax rates, one for residences and one for those businesses with the businesses being taxed at a much higher percentage. Groton currently doesn't have enough land zoned to create those economic development opportunities and to expand the commercial development to the point where we can have a split tax base. So therefore, what we need to do is we need to make sure that in order to maintain the beautiful look of Groton, that growth is controlled in an organized fashion that gives the components and the business opportunities to the residents and those visiting Groton that will meet their needs. But it's going to come at a price to maintain that rural character and that pretty rotten look to the taxpayers. So it's a fine balancing act and unless we can increase our revenues through other ways, it's going to be nearly impossible to achieve that goal, Jack.
But the select board just allocated $27,000 for marketing through economic development. What, what, what do taxpayers get for that?
Jack, that vote didn't get my vote in support of that because I didn't see the metrics that needed to be demonstrated by this group. And I certainly hope there'll be successes. And trying to invite people to come to Groton as a destination location may open certain pieces of land up for additional commercial development that might feed those visitations. However, I think that what we really need to be striving for is at least a part-time economic development director. However, in so much as the will of the board was to vote in favor of this $27,000 for the Destination Groton Committee, I need to abide by the will of the vote of the board and have faith that there will be some beneficial return to the taxpayers for the dollars that were appropriated.
Fair enough. So let's move on to budget, Josh. So the town manager's budget message this year is that the average tax bill last year was for a home of around $550,000 was just over, just under $9,200. And in '23, it'll be just over $9,600, which is a over a $400 increase or four and a half percent. I'm wondering, and that seems to be about what it is every year, about a four and a half percent growth, but salaries don't seem to be growing that quickly. What does that mean to you when taxes grow faster than incomes?
Well, that's kind of a masked question. Yes, salaries appear to be growing at two and a half percent per year on average. The employees took a 0% increase.
Sorry, sorry, I meant taxpayer salaries. I apologize.
Taxpayer salary is a whole different story.
Yeah, I'm saying, the question is, if your taxes, if my taxes are growing faster than my salary, what does that mean to you as a select board member?
It means that we need to be able to find other sources of revenue to stop that. Things like increasing pilot payments, going for more grant programs, going for as many things we possibly can outside of increasing taxes to the average taxpayer who aren't necessarily getting these things. But the big drivers in this basically are salaries, pensions, healthcare insurance, fuel expenses increase, home heating oil increases. We need more fire apparatus, more police, more teachers, more schools. All of these things come at a cost to a growing community. And without having that commercial tax base, it's very difficult because that burden falls on the shoulder of Joe taxpayer who isn't necessarily getting increases in their salary to match that, Jack.
All right. So you've mentioned more firefighters, more police. How do you go about deciding if a public safety expense is worth incurring?
Well, the price of a life is a difficult question to answer and does having increased 24/7 fire protection, which recently we brought on board, have a benefit? It has a perceived benefit that there's somebody in that ambulance or in that fire truck whenever they need it. But that comes at a major expense to the taxpayer and the taxpayers voted in favor of expanding a service like that.
Yeah, but those are all, those are all facts, but I'm asking how you decide if it's worth doing. Because you're, because the select board is the one that brings this forward. How does the select board decide? How does Josh Deegan decide if it's worth hiring another police officer, another firefighter?
Well, it has to be a presentation by the police chief or by the fire chief, by the department head that's in charge, documenting and justifying what that additional FTE or full-time equivalent employee is going to provide in terms of increased services and or protection to the taxpayer. They make a case to our board. They explain why we need this additional officer, whether it be police or fire. And then we have to use our discretion as select board members, whether or not to bring it forward for consideration by the town meeting voters as part of the overall budget.
Okay. What do you consider when you give the town manager budget guidance every year? What, what goes into your, your, your thinking? And eventually the number you put out?
Well, definitely that there should be no override involved of proposition two and a half. And that you have to maintain your budget, when I say your, I mean Mark Haddad, town manager's budget within that guidance. Some years we've given 2.2% guidance, other years we've given 2.5% guidance. But the point being is, is that with growing expenses, which I just elaborated on on a year-over-year basis, that the town manager must control his budget within the two and a half percent levy increase that the town is allowed to assess.
So the employee benefits are now $5 million this year. That's 30% of a $16 million budget. The year-over-year growth, do you have any sense for what the year-over-year growth rate is of, of those benefits?
Well, the health insurance on average is as eight to 11% increase year-over-year. That's one of the major drivers. Recently, we have established an OPEB fund, which is basically underfunded pension benefits, which just about every town in the country and city in the country has done. And there's a thing called GASB45, which says that we have to fund our unfunded pension liability to a higher level. There's another driver in that. We're not even coming close to achieving that. So employee benefits and our employees get pensions, they get health insurance, 70% of it covered by the town, not to consider not, not to consider wage growth. It's very difficult balancing act, Jack.
All right, let's move on to some of the questions in front of the town at the town meeting in the election. And we'll just really focus on the one, the town seal. What do you feel about the town seal question?
The first time we came to town was in 1991. My wife Amy and myself came here. And we saw the butchery of the town, how pretty it was, and we were immediately attracted to it. And then the very first time I went into town hall and saw the town seal and I looked at it and I said, hmm, there's a plow, hmm, there's a holy Bible in the dead center of that. And then there's faith. People believe in different things. We have a community that was founded back in the 1600s and a town seal that was formulated back in the late 1800s. Bottom line was at the time, it was a very Christian town with Christian beliefs. But now in this day and age, we have a tremendous amount of diversity in this town that believe in many religions, including myself, which I believe in Judaism. I think that a blank book on that seal has meaning to those that look at it. You can interpret it as whatever book of faith you want. You can interpret it as Tolstoy's War and Peace. You can interpret if they're nihilist is nothing. So that book is what you perceive it to be. And I think that the removal of the words holy Bible doesn't change the seal nor what anybody believes in, but allows us all to have free thought and free beliefs as to what it means to us.
Okay. A couple real quick ones. The Prescott Community Center, where do you sit on supporting that?
I am a firm supporter of that. I have, I had trepidations at the very beginning when it came out. But I also, if you're not aware, serve on the Prescott Oversight Committee, which is Bud Robinson from the Finance Committee, myself and town manager Mark Haddad. We're on a quarterly basis. We look at what their projections were for growth as well as what their projections will be for future growth and what their plans are for the future. And what we have aimed and strived to do is keep the taxpayer participation down to nil. And we're almost there. And my hat's off to all of the folks at Prescott School who've worked so hard to bring that to reality because they've overachieved on what they said they would do. And I think it's a great resource to the community.
Okay. The, a while ago, you talked a lot about getting rid of or reducing contributions to the CPA. So real quickly, because we're up against time here, where are you today with continued support of the CPA or continued participation at our current rate in the Community Preservation Act?
Jack, every day is a school day, okay? And I think that there's been a lot of great projects at the 3% surcharge. I think that a lot of the reason that it stayed at 3% had to do with a massive surrender in farm debt, which was being subsidized through the CPA. And now that that is extinguished, there's so many projects that are coming forward that the vast majority of I find extremely worthy. So for the time being, I'm satisfied as long as the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, gives proper oversight and review of all of these applications, then I am still willing to support it at 3%.
Okay. One of our viewers asks about traffic in town and we're not talking about traffic associated with Gratten Hill. We're talking about just the speed of traffic and efforts to do traffic calming on 119 and, and issues of engine braking. How much attention do you pay to that as a select board member?
I see 119 as a busy thoroughfare. And while I have been stuck in the traffic and I see the traffic issues, it's a, it's a road that goes across the state where it has over 20,000 vehicle trips per day on it. Tough to control traffic there. I do see the police out there doing some enforcement, but on the side roads, I see a tremendous amount of police enforcement. As a matter of fact, at 6:30 this morning, I drove by a cruiser on Martin's Pond Road on the corner of Shattuck Street. And he was doing clocking right there. So I'm glad I was traveling at a normal speed. So I think that the chief is aware of the traffic issues and that we ask him to monitor and put up speed traps. And we're doing the best we can to keep it under control.
Okay, great. Well, that kind of wraps up all the particular questions. Is there anything that, that we didn't talk about that you think voters should know about relative to your candidacy?
Sure, I've worked on grant opportunities with our state senator. And working with Senator Kennedy was able to achieve getting a sidewalk from the center of Main Street at Old Air Road, down Old Air Road to connect down to the new Groton Hill Music Center. In addition to that, five years ago, I proposed putting a ticket tax out there to raise revenues for performances at the former Indian Hill, now Groton Hill Music Center. And that went to town meeting and failed, but I didn't give up on that. We need to be able to create new sources of revenue. So working with a committee, working with Mark, Mark Haddad and our town accountant, one of our principal assessor and someone from the treasurer's office, we were able to negotiate a voluntary, I won't call it a ticket tax, but it's going to a thing called the Groton Community Fund, which is a ticket surcharge, which they're going to self-impose of $2 per ticket for paid performances. I think that's worked out well. There's a lot of other things. I've worked on the Williams Barn when the thing was falling apart, ready to fall into the ground. And a team of us worked together to resurrect that building into the beautiful structure it is today. I came up with the idea for a farmer's market and thus the Williams Barn Committee went with that. And then with all the diversity issues that we had in town in swastikas and the N-word being thrown around, the select board needed to do something about that. So after talking with my wife Amy, came up with the idea to create a diversity task force, put together a charge, sold it to the select board. It's been appointed and now they're doing yeoman's work, trying to make Groton a more inclusive place for all.
Well, Josh, I think we're, we're at the end. I think we've covered a lot of ground. Appreciate you bringing up those other issues that we hadn't talked about. I wish you good luck in May and I thank you for your service so far. And with any luck, you'll be on the board again. So with that said, thanks for your, for your interview, Josh.
Well, Jack, thanks for having me tonight and thanks to the Groton Channel for posting such excellent things that can provide the community with, with services and knowledge about the candidates that are out there for election.
More than welcome. Take care.
Thanks, Jack.
So I'd like to welcome Matt Pisani. Matt, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me, Jack. I greatly appreciate the opportunity.
Well, you're more than welcome. Thanks for running. Thanks for agreeing to be a part of this, this, this race this year. Four candidates for two positions. There's a lot of people to get to know and some decisions to make. So this is, hopefully this will be useful. Tell us a little bit about your background, Matt. You're not an incumbent, so you don't have elected office background to go back on, but you have professional background. Give us a sense for what that is and how that prepares you for this role.
Sure. I've been very fortunate in my career, I would say, to try out, to work in a lot of different industries. Started off in the seafood business, dealing with a perishable product. So decisions had to be made quickly and efficiently. Did that for a number of years until the industry declined. And fortunately, I had an opportunity to work for UPS as a senior account manager. There I was responsible for a $70 million account base that I had to maintain with a very aggressive growth plan year to year. And from there, I am where I am now. I am currently working for a smaller company. We build non-destructive ultrasonic testing equipment. And I am the project manager slash operations manager. So I have to bring all departments together to get the product that we put out. We're vertically integrated. We do everything ourselves. So it's my job to orchestrate all that. So I feel, you know, the experience I have in a multi-departmental company certainly prepares me for what the select board would have to offer.
Got it. How, a couple of accomplishments that you've had along the way and maybe some mistakes that you've incurred along the way and what those are and how they, what the lessons that they've taught you.
You know, life is, life is full of the challenges you just mentioned, ups and downs. I've been fortunate because, and I will relay this back to my parents, that my parents gave me a great work ethic. And I think that has helped carry me along throughout, so the never give up kind of attitude. But, you know, one of my biggest disappointments was in the seafood industry. If I could have been a commercial fisherman today, I would have done it. But seeing the decline in the industry based off of our own greed and not really doing much about it was, was a serious mistake. So you learn from that and you move on. I've been successful in the endeavors I've had since then and it's helped propel me to where I am.
Okay. How would you describe your political affiliation and, and what role, if any, does a political affiliation have in the select board?
Well, I mean, we all have our beliefs. I'm a registered Republican. But that doesn't mean I'm a diehard and we're not going to get, we're not going to get into past administrations for sure. But I definitely, I definitely feel both ways. I mean, I think it's more of a common sense approach to what we need now. And unfortunately, we're a little divided, but I think as, as you see the world what it is now, it'll, unfortunately for some, it'll help bring the world together. So you know, I, I think politics. you know, I, I, I think politics, yes, but the good of the, good of the town is the most important thing, you know, weighing the pluses and the minuses.
Okay. Um, and, and do you have faith that the recent federal elections were free and fair and the state, and that local elections will be free and fair?
I, 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 I do, I do. And, you know, unfortunately, things have just gotten crazy and that, and it distracts from the real things that need to be addressed. So our system works well, and, and I, there's enough checks and balances in place to assure that. So it's just, it's just unfortunate that because of that distraction, maybe we're not as far along as we should be.
Okay, great, thanks. I'll move on to, um, to economic development. Can we, can we reduce the burden on taxpayers through economic development?
We absolutely have to. That's our only chance of success here. I mean, you look at the tax growth from year to year. I mean, what are we, from twenty-two to twenty-three, we're looking at a six point seven five percent increase. We've got to take a look at other alter, uh, other revenue streams. I mean, we are now funding the, um, the Destination Groton Committee. That's, that's a big one, because we, we've got these, these state-of-the-art facilities we're putting up. We have to bring in other businesses that still complement what Groton is, the small-town community. So we have to be selective, but we certainly need to look at alternative streams. Cannabis dispensaries are, oh, cannabis dispensaries are coming in, you know, their streams there, revisit pilot initiatives. It's, it's time to look at other, other avenues.
Okay. You, you mentioned funding Destination Groton, so I, um, the town just gave Destination Groton twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, what, what will taxpayers get for that?
Well, you know, I, I, I read the report they, they put out, and I was, I was quite impressed. I mean, it's, it's, it's a new committee, so we, they don't have a lot to show. But if you look at the research they did in comparing comparable towns in comparable situations, I think they did a great job of, of looking at what succeeded, what maybe not succeeded, or, or, or what was the best, th- th- the best plan going forward. So I, I think what we're gonna see from them is they are going to introduce Groton to other groups, other business ventures, other initiatives that will, uh, potentially bring business to us.
But for, but my question really is, the twenty-seven thousand dollars is for use in a specific use, what does that twenty-seven thousand get us? And what good does that thing do? How, and how does it do, how does it do us good? Meaning, how will taxpayers see the return of that twenty-seven thousand dollars?
You know, I don't think, I don't, I don't think you could say, hey, we're gonna see a return immediately on this, because as I said, they're a new group, you know, and, and it's, it's, they're volunteers who are, who are doing this, who are willing to go out of the way to try and bring additional revenue streams to Groton, you know, through mark, through, through the marketing, through, um, I, I don't know specifically what that twenty-seven is slated for, but I think, you know, the, the marketing initiative and just getting our name Groton out there into the New England, you know, economy is what we need to do.
Okay. So, um, also talked about at that meeting was the hiring of an economic development professional. You know, the, i- i- those people are there in order to make money for a town, so it's not like that's a low-wage job. It's gotta be a hundred thousand dollars plus the support costs, which are not just having pencils and pens. How, should we hire an economic development person in this town? How would, how would you analyze whether an economic development professional is worth hiring?
Right. I mean, I, I think that may be down the road if, if these, if the, the committee finds areas where we can actually bring in business. And at that point, th- that person could nurture that and bring it along. Are we there right now? Are we ready to hire that person right now? I think we're a little early right there.
Okay. So in order for that to happen, we have to have sort of the capacity to absorb more business, uh, and you know, i- i- our, our commercial area is built out right now, so it's, it's not like we're gonna get more building revenue or property tax revenue from businesses. And businesses only represent five percent of our revenue today. Uh, in order to have more business areas, you've gotta take down residential areas, which is a one-for-one trade. How, how do we generate more revenue? What are the opportunities for meaningful revenue, um, from, from economic development?
Sure. I mean, if, if you, if you look with the cana- cannabis dispensary, I know it's, it's a hot-button topic, the one at Four Corners. You know, people are worried about traffic. It's already, it's, it's already a commercially zoned business. It's, it, there's already traffic there. There are some underutilized business buildings right there that we could, that we could utilize on both sides of the street and going down Forge Village. So it's not like we have to recreate right now, because there, there are opportunities right now that we, we can fill. Um, you know, should the one, should the one at Mill Run pass and, and get rezoned, there's opportunities there as well. You look at what the, the deluxe campus may turn into. Um, there's an opportunity for, for commercial space there as well within, within what they have already planned.
Okay.
So it's not like we have to tear stuff down.
Let's move on to budget, because that's really at the heart of many people's questions. Al now, for instance, asks, you know, what are you gonna do to limit the growth of my taxes? Now, let's speak real sort of generally right now, because we'll go into some specific tax things in a minute, but, uh, can you answer Al's question?
Wha- what, are we gonna do to lower, to lower the taxes?
Yeah, how are you gonna lower his taxes?
Yeah, you know, I, I wish, I wish there was a silver bullet. The, the way we do that is, as I said, um, it's, we take a look at the pilot program. I know people have talked about that in the past. They've addressed it, but things change. There are, you know, we, we do have a number of, of nonprofits in town that are very profitable. Well, um, you know, they had offered services in the past to all help offset that. We need, we need to talk to these folks and, and understand the fact that they are, th- th- the town is paying into them in terms of services, whether it be police, fire, uh, DPW. So we just need to make sure. And as, as, as they go along and they, they pull residential units off of our tax roll, you know, that's, they gain, we lose. So there's, there's some traction to be had there for that discussion.
Yep, yep. You know, so our, the growth in taxes this year, I think, is on the order of two million dollars. I could be wrong, but, um, you know, it's a five, it's five, four, maybe a three and a half percent growth on a sixteen billion-dollar budget.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, you know, if you got a hundred thousand extra dollars one year out of one of the nonprofits, that would be a drop in the bucket in terms of actual impact of the growth.
But you, 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 yes, it, for that year, but then you continue that, you continue that momentum. You don't just say this is a one-year thing.
Right.
You, you, you perpetuate that down the road. So, y- you know, these discussions are not for today. These discussions are for the future. Um, and that's what we do. So I mean, we have, we have the Finance Committee who does a great job of, of, of keeping the budget where it needs to be, or, or keeping our department heads as tight as they can be.
So this year's taxes are gonna grow, uh, the average taxpayer will pay four and a half percent more than they did last year. Um, typically, and typically taxpayer salaries are growing maybe at two percent a year. When, when taxes grow faster than salaries, what does that, what does that mean to you? What, and what does that compel you to do as a selectman?
You know, even though I've only been in this, this race a short time, it's, it's amazing the number of people who have come up to me and said, listen, I can't afford to live in this town anymore. So it's a reality. I mean, these people who've been here for their whole life or possibly generations, and by no fault of their own, their property, which years ago was X, and now it's Y, um, they can't afford to live that way. That, this is what, this is what we need to address. Yes, we need affordable housing, but we also need affordable tax rate. So this is where, as I kee- as I keep harping on, taxpayers can't fund this all. We need to look at additional streams.
Okay. So, um, the greatest growth in our taxes is from the schools for a variety of reasons. But on the municipal side, which is the only side the select board has any control over, the greatest growth in taxes is coming from personnel costs. Uh, there are two issues. One is, is, uh, the, the, really the benefits, uh, in personnel costs are growing at a fantastic rate. But the other is the addition of new, new employees. And so we recently hired, uh, four new firefighters. Um, and that is at a cost of a hundred thousand dollars per firefighter, or basically almost a half million dollars per year of spending. How do you, how do you decide if a public safety expense is worth making? What, what analysis do, would you use or do you use to determine, yeah, we should do that?
Well, uh, well, this is where, you know, you talk to the department heads and, and the people involved in the process. I mean, I, because you brought up the fire department, I can talk to that directly, because I'm, I've been a call fire member for ten years. And again, we've turned Groton into a place people wanna live. So the population is swelling. And as, as a call department, it was just getting harder and harder for us to maintain, maintain the call volume. So that is something we had to do. Moving forward, again, you know, the town is going to grow. As, as we grow, we're gonna have to take a look at the potential for additional new personnel.
You, you said it's something we had to do, but that doesn't tell me how you just, how you decided that it was something that we had to do. What do you, what do you do to decide that it's something we have to do? Do you just pay attention to the department head?
No, when, when calls go unanswered, when a medical call, when one of our members of our community calls for help and nobody shows up, that's a problem, especially when they're paying the tax rates they're paying. That's a big problem. So it, it, that was a, that was a perfect example of when it was time to say, yep, we have outgrown what we can offer. We have to move on and, uh, now for something additional, because, because, listen, my tax rate is crazy. I want some services for that. So if I fall down the stairs, I wanna make sure somebody's coming to get me. You know, and as we move forward, as the town continues to grow, the reality is we are going to need to have full-time on, on all municipal departments, DPW, police, fire. It's going to be a reality.
Got it.
This is where we plan now, we need to plan now for, forecast, do our diligence right now. Plan, you know, we don't need it right now, but we are going to. So this is where we start, we start figuring out how to, how do we absorb this, these costs?
So employee benefits, um, all right, five million dollars this year. That's thirty percent of a sixteen million dollar budget, just for benefits. And they're growing at over ten percent a year. What, what does that mean to you as a selectman? And, and what are the choices? And, and what choices would you make?
Well, I mean, you, you know, the, the harsh reality is we have to take a look at what other corporations are doing, and you know, as far as pensions are going. You know, we, we do, we, we have unions, we have pensions. Um, as we bring on additional employees, do we migrate to a different type of pension plan? Do we, do we, um, offer other, other compensations for that? You know, these are the discussions that need, need to happen in terms, so, like, we've just completed all the negotiations with the unions. But this is something we have to talk to them about moving forward, because it's a reality.
So I'll move on to sort of current issues in town, and, uh, there's nothing sort of more talked about by a lot of people anyway than the town seal. Where do you, where do you sit on the changes to the town seal?
Well, you know, I, I'm, I'm glad that the select board put it out to, to, uh, on the ballot for a vote, as opposed to, they took it off the warrant. Because, you know, we, we were here four years ago. We went through this exercise four years ago. So I think a- a- and this is unfortunate, the town meeting doesn't draw enough people. So, so it, it, you really don't get the full sense of what the, 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 the majority of the town thinks.
Where do you stand on the, on the issue of changing the seal?
You know, I, I, I'm a person, I, I, I believe in history. I, you know, it, it, it's not offensive to me. It's a tribute to the people who founded the town. And I really don't see a need to change it. The majority, the majority of the world population sees that book as, as their spiritual guide. So personally, I don't, I don't see the need to change it. You know, but, but, but when you, we talk about, you know, we never talked about what happens if we do change it. Do we do it all at once? Because you look at the costs associated with that. And when somebody's coming up to me and saying, I can't afford my taxes, but I'm gonna say, hey, here's, here's another, pick a number, a hundred thousand dollars to change all the seals, I can't look them in the eye and say, yeah, that's, that's, that's money well spent.
Okay.
You know, it's not, it's not, it, it's not an offensive s- title on the book.
Got it. Um, so just, we'll go to, uh, a last round of general questions, some coming from the community, uh, real quick on, on traffic. So one nineteen, one of our viewers asks about, uh, lives on one nineteen, is concerned about traffic on one nineteen, and asks what you might be able to do, or what you think of the traffic level there, and what you might be able to do about calming traffic down on one nineteen.
Yeah, I mean, it, again, I, I roll back to, we created a town people wanna live in. People are, people are migrating to town. One nineteen's a, a state road. There's not a lot of, that we can physically do about it, but, um, you know, it, it's a, it's a reality of a town that's growing. You know, we, 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 we could talk to the state.
Uh, folks are asking how you, uh, how you stand on supporting the, the continued use of Prescott as a community center?
Oh, absolutely. You know what? Um, when that first came up, I'll, I'll admit, I thought we should sell it to, to, to the, the buyer who was positioned, but you know, the folks, that, that, that group has done a great job in turning that facility around, and it's right in the center of town, and it's, 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 they've done a great job. It's full. There's people always, there's always activities there. I think they've, it's a, it's a wonderful addition to the town.
Okay. And, um, on the, on the CPA, do you, how do you feel about continuing to support the CPA at our current rate?
Y- y- you know, again, with, with the, the way finances are, it, it, they'd have to be very str- it'd have to be very strategic. You know, we just, we just, we just need to know where the, where the funding is going.
But should we continue to support at three percent?
Y- y- we should support it, yes, but I mean, as far as expenditures, you know, just, we just have to be, have to be diligent in, in the expenditure.
Okay. Um, so, you know, part of the nature of asking the public for questions is sometimes they can ask some pretty embarrassing questions. So I, I gotta ask you this.
Oh.
If, if elected, will you continue to be a fire truck Santa?
I will. You know what? I'm gonna do that job until they throw me off of that. Yet, I started that nine, or I got drafted into it nine years ago, because nobody else wanted to do it. The first stop we made, and I saw the faces of the children, I'm like, I'm in, you're never taking this away from me.
Got it. Um, and so I know, uh, and, and the, the person who asked me that actually asked about John Riley, um, but I, I did, I did some research and found that you also, uh, stuffed that suit. Um, and, uh, so, you know, I know that, that you guys in the department are pretty tight. Are, are you working with John on your election as a select board member? Is there any coordination? Uh, do you guys see things eye to eye? What, what are you talking about?
Be- because I know John from, from past, my past life, or my current life.
And from Santa Claus.
I've asked him questions, you know, just to, just to, to know what to expect and some, some procedures, because, you know, a- again, I'm not a politician, don't know this, as far as banking information, things of that nature.
Okay. So there's not a Santa Claus political, political action committee here?
No. Not yet, there isn't.
Just wanna be sure that we, we're knowing everything about you, all right?
Yeah, full disclosure.
All right. So, uh, that kind of wraps up all the questions that I have. Is there anything that we, uh, didn't cover that you want that you feel voters should know? And we're tight on time, but if there's something special?
No, I just, it just, you know, it, I'm stepping into a, I, I am running for a job that the folks doing this job do a great job at. It's, I'm not running because, because it's a bad, they're doing a bad job. I'm running because I want, I wanna get involved. Um, we're fortunate. We've got, you know, great department heads, as I said, you know, finance committees, capital planning advisory committees. We do a lot to make sure what we do, it's done right. So it's, you know, it, it, I'm stepping into a job that, that, that the, you included, have, have laid out and, and made it a pretty respectable job, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, uh, that's a wrap. Um, Matt, I wanna thank you for your time here.
No, and I, thank you.
Yeah, you're more than welcome. Good luck, and, uh, we'll catch you on the other side.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Take care.
Bye-bye now.
So, welcome, John Riley.
Jack Hawaia, thanks for having me.
I'm well, thank you, and thanks for joining. It's, it's really important that, uh, we have great and qualified candidates, uh, showing up and volunteering for this, and I appreciate that you're, uh, put yourself up this year and, uh, the three years that you've served already. So thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate that, and you should be thanked for your service too in the past.
More than welcome.
And now.
Yeah. So why don't we jump into your background? What is it about your background that prepares you for this position? And how have you seen that background, um, be valuable in your three years?
Well, my professional background didn't really prepare me for the, the role as a select board member, except that maybe the budget stuff I was involved in, and on a smaller level than this town, but I was a state police officer for thirty-four and a half years. Uh, my specialty was aviation security, kind of on, and, and we do some work on a Uh, my specialty was aviation security, kind of on and and we do some work on a kind of a national level, but it really, it really is completely different than from town uh business. But I've always paid attention to town business, no matter where I lived. I grew up in Cambridge. Um, my family was always in in involved in kind of the town, the city politics and all, and uh I love this this town of Groton when we moved in in two thousand and thirteen and was urged to run for select board three years ago by many friends, uh got involved, I was volunteering at the I was a call firefighter, Mountain Lakes Club, volunteered with at the senior center and uh was pretty in touch with all people in town and asked me to run and I ran and I'm back again.
Great. So you got three years under your belt as a select board member. Give us a sense for two accomplishments and one mistake that you've um got that you've that you feel responsible for over these last three years and and what you learned.
The first three years for for anybody doing this, excuse me, and you probably know this is, for me, it's a a major learning curve. Uh, the budget stuff is 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 it's kind of intricate and extremely important. So paying attention to the the budget was one of the things that I I really uh I wouldn't say I enjoyed it so much, but it's one of the things I've learned. Uh, I was I was happy with some of the things that have changed and with the the full time fire department, which which was, which I was happy with and um I didn't have much to do with the center being finished because it was all being done before I got there, but um all of those things were pretty, pretty interesting. And I think because the first three years are more learning too, I think I do I do a really a better job than the next three years because you're poised to, you learn more, you're you're poised to do do a lot better than you have the first three years.
Is there nothing in particular that you worked on that you can say you brought forward, that you particularly brought forward uh during the first three years?
No, I I this there's been so many different things brought before us and it's kind of a whirlwind for me too. Uh, every Monday, getting packets on Friday and paying attention to what's coming out for the Mondays. Um, but we've we've got a lot done in three years and and the town is is really get changing and we can all see that too. Uh, the size of the town, a lot of new stuff that we'll probably be talking about later is happening.
Yeah.
So I mean, I've been a part of all of those things and I I wouldn't say that I bet was the 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 impetus of them. I I wasn't, you know, just a part of the team that did it, you know.
Okay, um, how would you describe your political affiliation and what role should political affiliation have on the select board?
That's an excellent question because that was one of my kind of pet peeves at the town level that people would get all worked up and in in kind of radical e- either direction at at the national level, because I think at the at the local level, we don't need to concern ourselves with that as much. I'm not, I'm not registered Democrat, I'm not a registered Republican, I'm unenrolled. And I've always voted the issues in the person at all all levels, particularly the town level. And I think I feel more involved, like most people probably do, particularly in a town like ours, where this is a perfect example of it. Where at the town level, you your voice is louder, your voice is more important, your voice is is heard more, but um that's where I stand politically at the town level. And I'm like I say, I'm unenrolled, but um, people can call me whatever they want, but that's where I'm at.
Great. Sort of along the same lines, um, but we just asked this of all the candidates. Do you have faith that the recent federal, state and local elections have been free and fair?
That that's another really good question. Uh, and that the short of the answer it is, yes. Uh, I have a lot of problems with some of what went on at the national, local, again, local level zero concern, state level probably zero concerns. National level maybe a little bit, but I do believe the free and fair election. What is a free and fair election? Free and fair elections, everybody gets to vote without the influence of anybody else. I do have some personal beliefs about uh voter identification, but uh I think everybody should be able to vote and everybody should be able to to run for office to it. And and I think, you know, starting at local levels is is the natural progression for people. Uh, not me, I don't have any plans to go anywhere from from the town of Groton, but that's where I'm at with free and fair elections.
Got it. Let's turn to economic development. Um, do you think we can reduce the burden on taxpayers through economic development?
We have to.
Well, but the question is, can we?
Yes, well, yeah, and and at the at this ti- the town level, yeah, and again, I'm gonna say we have to because my concern in Groton is with a lot of it is with the elderly are getting taxed out of the town who grew up here, who wanna live their life out here. And that's one of my concerns. So I I you said, can we can we raise the revenue with economic development? Is that what your question was?
Yeah, I wanna I'm 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 interested in knowing if you believe it can be done and and if you if the answer is yes, I'd like you to tell me how we can do it, meaning where do those opportunities sit? Is it through vacant land? Is it through increased building? What what is it?
It 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 can be done, but I don't know to the extent we can do it because of the nature of this town too, because of the open space. And we have new projects coming into town now at the deluxe property, the waters property, a small parcel next to the deluxe property. We just got those two dispensaries, which was kind of controversial too, because of people's uh opinions on the sale of that kind of stuff. Those kind of thing, that's gonna bring us some money. My oh my fear about that was maybe we were behind the eight ball at all because it's everywhere around us. It's in here, it's in Littleton. Um, we we've got two dispensaries coming in, uh it's the projections are it's going to help us in a in a in a in a way that will it give us more revenue. We have most of our revenue, as we all know, comes from the real estate taxes. Forty 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 percent of it, forty percent of the budget comes from the real estate, forty forty million of the fifty million dollar budget comes from our real estate taxes. That leaves us that little bit of room and we all love our open space, so this um a a fine line to walk between our open spaces and where we can get some more businesses to 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 come into town and where are we gonna put them? We have some space up at the four corners, um but is that gonna be enough to raise all lower all our taxes? I don't know. That that's something we need to look at, it's something we need to work on. Maybe this is gonna take some zoning change.
Like the Four Corners property is almost entirely built out right now, so the taxes, the property taxes are largely already being paid there. You know, the opportunity there is to build
There's no business, there's a building that's half vacant, we've got that new liquor store coming in with and another. Yep, the the taxes there, real estate wise, right, but not sales tax wise or or and then there's a few pads left. Yeah, there's not much room, we all know.
Couple pads here.
Yeah.
Should we hire an economic development professional?
Another good question, and we've been talking about it at the select board. I think the the talk about was um po- a part time director of economic development. I don't think we're there yet, honestly. We have to the the uh the Groton Business Association, Destination Groton, they're working, they're kind of like uh, I wouldn't call them economic advisors, but it's kind of getting us started at the lower level. At some point, I I think we we may need something like that, but we're not there yet. We're not there and if we and and we if we get there, it would probably start out at like a part time position.
How would you make that decision?
Another good question. So that would come with the with the it'll probably come naturally like dictate itself. And that's a really good question because the select board, the select board and certain committees are kind of the economic development directors now, are are they not? I'm not asking the question them rhetorically, but they are.
Ask the questions here.
I gotcha. Yeah, so they exactly. So, yeah, that's a really good question. It 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 uh it might may be take some evolving.
So John, we um we just approved, I mean, you voted to approve twenty seven thousand dollars for marketing. Um, what do taxpayers get for that?
The I I did support that and the what what I'm what I'm hoping we get from that is some increase in some in business, in foot traffic, in exposure and uh and and grants, because we were told that that's if anybody watched the meeting. If we didn't, we didn't use that money, then we wouldn't be eligible for grants. And it was one grant in particular, if I remember correctly. So I'm hoping we get that grant, but we we made a commitment to those people that we would give them some help too. And um I I stood by it and I still stand by it. I think it's a good thing.
So are are we expecting a financial return, meaning if taxpayers invested twenty seven thousand dollars, should they get twenty seven thousand dollars back? And if so, through what through what channels will that come back in?
Well, that's gonna be hard to measure and and particularly when you put a figure like that, twenty seven for twenty seven, I'm hoping it's gonna be more than that. Because if the grant is it becomes, it will be more than that. We may not get the grant. And and it's a risk, it's a gamble and those are some things that you have to weigh when you're sitting on the select board. You have to weigh those risks and gambles uh and keep in mind whose money it is. It's it's our money and it is a risk, but like I said, we made a commitment to those people, we're making a commitment to Groton Destination, we're making a commitment to the town and I I don't know how you're gonna put a a measurement on what we get back. Maybe they can quantify it, but they did mention some some ways to quantify it and maybe um, I don't know how, but let's see.
Okay, moving on to the budget, which is sort of related, but it's just more focused. Um, Al Nev asks, what will you do to limit the growth of my taxes? Sort of a quintessential question across the board.
Yeah, you know, every day people ask me that and it's it's a difficult question because we we're we're limited, I mean, every every year, our expenses are going up and the the salaries are going up. We we have the the budget is is put in place and every year you're we 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 tell, we say stay within the levy limit. Uh, given the two and a half percent with the state and certified growth, no overrides, that's we we try to do, but then we have all this excluded debt which goes against the 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 tax rate, which is costing us money. It's, yeah, it's it's difficult. So we have to look at the schools are 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 costing us a lot of money, fifty six, average fifty six dollars per hundred of our tax money, which we don't have much of a saying, we we're part of some of this team and they keep us surprised, but the schools are costing us a lot of money. It's hard, it's hard to keep it down, but it's important that we we do and we've got to do a little bit better job of keeping those things down too.
So um to get a little more of a fine point on it, taxpayers or sorry, taxes will go up for the average taxpayer this year by or next year by uh four and a quarter percent, no, four and a half percent. Um, but in general, salaries don't go up by that much, maybe two percent a year was was the average. This year might be a little better, but in general, the rise in taxes have far outpaced rise in wages. What is that?
You're you're talking about our taxpayers' salaries, right?
That's correct, correct. So basically, it's an issue of affordability, meaning uh
Yeah.
One part of your, one part of your bills are going up faster than your income. What does that mean to you? What what do you think? What does that tell you long term?
It's it's not sustainable, number one, but we but that's a that story, that that is happening everywhere, not just in Groton, it's happening everywhere. Oh, um, it here because we we have a little bit different community with the with the open spaces and we're kind of restricted. We have the same tax rate for business, which is very small, as we all know, we don't have it. Um, somebody jokingly said one way to lower our taxes in Groton is to annex air, but I don't think they'll let us do that, but so but yeah, that's a really good point. The expenses, the town expenses rise just like everybody's household rises and we have all these employees, I think it's eighty percent of our budget is salaries. And that I guess their salaries that we just settled contracts with all the unions, their their salaries have gone up and we're paying for it, we're all paying for that, I get that.
But if we see no end to the fact that taxes are rising faster than incomes, what do we tell taxpayers? I mean, do to does that mean that at some point we just have to accept that some people can't afford to leave her anymore?
That's that's my issue when we talk about the elder, that's a hundred, what it's think about it, I mean, if I had to and I'm getting into the elderly stage, I could go out and get another part time job, but who wants to do that? But these these are elderly that have lived here, some of them all their lives, lots of them all their lives, they don't have the potential to earn more income. So no, you can't tell them that because you gotta fix it. You can't, you can't tell them that, you you're gonna have to fix it. How you fix it is to try to develop more revenue, try to get some housing in here for the for the elderly, those are things that we're gonna try. And then we've worked on it a little bit in the in the last three years that I've been around, but it seems to have been around for a lot longer than I've been on the select board too.
So you think the only opportunity for fixing it is on the revenue side?
No, no, that's good, good, good second follow up on that. No, uh, the other opportunity is on the expense side, uh obviously, it's it's just like running a household. We have to prioritize better. We have to loo- look at the expenses better. Yeah, no, it's a combination of both of us, it's it's simple, it's not simple because it's difficult to do.
What expense would you look to? What expense would you look to 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 solve this?
I I don't know. I have, I don't know at this point, I would, you have to look at everything, you gotta look at all the sa- I mean, I was talking about this in the last couple of days with someone, it's not like, you know, we can cut down on paper clips and paper and copy paper and things like that. Our major expense is is salaries as we know. And we've got some big outlays, capital outlays, we had the senior center, the fired up the firehouse, now it's got the the new school, the water treatment plant, all these excluded debts. So yeah, those are things that that come and we've got to look at them and prioritize our our expenses, Betty, better and either halt them or find ways to cut them.
So we recently just um added four firefighters at roughly a hundred thousand apiece. Um, how do you go, and that's a big additional cost, uh geez, I I don't know what that means per household, that's a hundred dollars a year per household. Um, how do you go about deciding if a public safety expense is worth making? What what's the cost benefit analysis that you do?
Another really good question. I i- in being looking at it from the outside and also from the inside, uh we gotta pay attention to our department heads, we gotta pay attention to the the calls for service, whether police, fire, highway, library, you gotta pay attention to the calls for service. Um, and we had a a eight million dollar building, eight and a half million dollar building sitting there vacant, six P to six A. I don't know, I know from just being around town that a lot of the taxpayers didn't know that it was unmanned from six P to six AM. Um, we got el- the elderly people that we're running the ambulance, the town runs, the fire department runs the ambulance. So it's another hard thing to quantify, but what's one one life worth? One, 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 one person who you can't get to a- after six o'clock at night, what's it worth? I mean,
Is 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 it, is that number unlimited, meaning if you, is there no limit to the amount we would spend to save that life?
No, absolutely not. And and that and a- again, that's all all gonna have to be part of the future of this town and where we're going, particularly now with what's, if it comes up later in your question, I don't know. With the new housing that's coming in, we have the potential in the next three years to see roughly another two hundred and sixty to three hundred housing units in town. And if someone's got a problem with staffing the police and fire, how do you service those people? The calls for service are gonna multiply exponentially and and whi- which they have, which I say justifies what we did in the past with the fire department and the and the dispatchers, which we needed desperately. It all costs money and it's all very expensive. But we need it.
So let's move on to some current issues. Actually, there's really just one high issue topic and that's the um the issue that of the town seal. Where do you stand on the um the initiative to change the wording of the town seal?
That one has been up coming around for a long time, my own. I supported bringing it to the referendum, the non binding referendum to the town. I I've I've gone that way with a few of the issues too. My personal opinion is I don't want it. I don't want the seal changed, my own personal opinion. Uh, for for me, it's purely a historical reason, it's not a religious reason, although I I get some of the religious reason, I even get some of the religious reasons of the people who oppose it. I've talked into a lot of people all over town, of many different religions, creeds who also agree that it should not be changed because who also agree that it should not be changed because, because it's the history of it. I have a hard time equating the people that founded this town with being exclusive, offensive. I, 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 I don't, I don't see the connection. And someone once asked me, if the Quran was on the seal, you'd have a different argument. No, I wouldn't. I'd have the same argument. But I, I will say this publicly, probably for the first time, whatever the referendum shows us, I'll support it. And it's one of the reasons I, I went. So, if, if the overwhelming response, and I don't know that other members would do that, but I'll support it. And that's why I, I wanted it to go to the town. I, I hear from people every day and honestly, most of the people I talk to, but you know, I run in the circles I run in. So, they want, they want to keep it the same. But, you know, we'll see how the referendum goes and see where it goes from there.
Yeah, yeah. I got a question about traffic calming along one nineteen. You know, maybe your, your background is particularly good for this and engine braking. And there are just a lot of complaints about people who live along one nineteen, about the amount of traffic that goes along there and how fast that traffic goes. You, you think there's anything that the town can do? Do you would think there's anything you can put forward that would help people who live along one nineteen to feel better about the traffic along there?
You ask a lot of really good questions.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and that, that, that's a, another, we're, we're in it, we're situated in such a spot that that one nineteen is the main drag for lots of west, Pepperell, Townsend, Ashby, Ashburnham, the trucks that come through here, we are a hundred percent. I think you have, we have to work with the state, but what do, we're not going to widen Main Street. What are, what are we going to do? You, you're right, but the growth is coming this way, right? It's coming west and even west of Groton. The town is growing and even more so in the next three years. And then west of us is also going to grow. So, we got to work with the state, we got to watch it, we got to watch it ourselves, the traffic counters and the federal government. But it's, it's a, it's, it's putting twenty pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack and it's going to get worse. We're getting more potatoes.
It's a great analogy. How about your support for the Prescott Community Center? Where do you stand on their continued operations?
I, I, we made a commitment to the Friends of the Prescott as a town. We get, we just renewed the lease a little while ago for three years with an option for three more years. We've, we've gotten better conditions from them with the rent at twenty thousand dollars. And people say, big deal, twenty thousand dollars and five percent of their gross revenues, which is also a little bit of a help. For me, I struggled with this at the beginning before I was on the select board. And I've, I've, I wouldn't say I've come a hundred and eighty, but they've been doing a good job in there. And we're the landlords, we own that building. And as a town, as a community, we agreed to, to do that. And we have to give them the shot to do it and we have to make the needed repairs as they're going along too. So, one of my friends that we were talking about with this said, yeah, if, if Groton went out and rented that thing on their own, the town of Groton, to doctors, lawyers, you could haul in a lot more money, probably. Think about the commercial real estate and what it's worth, probably. But we decided as a town that we wanted our own community members in there. So, there's a cost to that and the cost of it is what it was worth back in the day when they wanted to sell it, which was before me. There's a cost to that. And, but apparently, we're good with that cost. And as long as the town is good with that cost, I'm good with that cost.
How do you feel about the town's contributions to the Community Preservation Act and, and should they continue at the current rate?
I, I also voted in support of keeping it at three percent. But that might be something we need to look at in the future. How much would we save the individual taxpayers if we reduce that? Or maybe how much would we cost? How much would it cost? I think we have a million, five hundred thousand left in, let's say, the three buckets to store open housing, which the housing, the housing bucket seems to be the largest one that we haven't used. We just can't, seems, seems that we just can't keep going, we can't get going at that. But I did support that because of the, again, this, the state matching and by matching, it's not, some people may think or thought, you know, if we, if we put it, if we spend a hundred thousand, the state's going to match with a hundred thousand. That's not quite it. I think they matched, they, I think it was like a forty percent return, but at least it's, it's something. It, it doesn't, again, people, it doesn't raise the tax rate, but to me, everybody's got a, a wallet and the money that comes out of the wallet, I don't care what you call it. You call it the tax rate or CPA surcharge or excluded debt, it all comes out of the same wallet.
So, the last question I have comes from a member of the public anonymous, and so I'm not responsible for it. But I apologize, I apologize ahead of time, but they want to know that if you're elected, will you still be Santa Claus?
I, I, I don't know who gave you that and even you asking that is pretty, pretty cool. I, I don't know how to take that. Which way, I was Santa Claus when I was on the fire department. I've been Santa Claus for other people in town and all. But I guess if elected, I, I'll, I will be Santa Claus.
I think they, I don't know, because they were, they were anonymous, but I think they were under the impression that you're still playing Santa Claus on the fire truck or for the fire department.
No, I, I, no, not since I left the call department a couple of years ago, I, I haven't done it, no.
Oh, so you're, you've announced your retirement from Santa Claus, at least for the fire department here on, on Groton Matters. I feel like a very important TV channel at this point. Well, well, that's great. Well, obviously, you made quite an impression and I think the question was asked with a lot of endearment. So,
That's, that's awesome. I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, that does it for me, John, in terms of questions that I have personally and that I've got from, from viewers. Is there anything we didn't cover that you think is important that people know about you and your candidacy here?
No, I, I, I think the learning curve for me is, is just about over. And, and it's, it's, it's important, you know, people have been calling me and, and Jack, you may know this, that I, I fought, I've kind of fought with kind of running for reelection. And I got calls from several different people that were interested in running for select board. And I encouraged three of them, three of the three people called me, I encouraged them all to run. Only one of the three is running. But I, I think, I, I want, I, I want one more term of this to try to help and do the best we can. I think in general, everybody that serves on that board and has served on that board has the best interests of this town in their, in their heart.
Great. Well, John, thank you very much. Appreciate the time here and I wish you the best of luck in May.
Thanks, Jack.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Groton Matters.
Well, that wraps up our interviews. I want to thank the candidates for taking the time to do these interviews and for stepping up to offer their time and service to the town. I also want to thank the Groton channel, particularly Noah, for all of their help. And thank you. Thanks for taking the time to watch this and, and thank you for the questions that you've submitted. They really make the interviews, I think, valuable and, and really help to legitimate the, the things that we ask our, our candidates. Comments on this show can go or can be made to grotonmatters.com. There's a comment section for the show or you can send comments in by email to grotonmatters@gmail.com. Thanks again and remember to vote on May twenty-fourth.